Hello Anitha.
Yes, what did you say?
Students.
Students.
Underscore.
Alright, done.
Run it. You see, it didn't show error. Okay, still running.
It's still running, I don't know why it's picking thing.
Yeah, run already. Yes, you see, it's marked good, showing that is actually a, like, like, it's actually an identifier, like, it was coded in the right way. You can also call def, B E F, calculate underscore age. Close bracket. Close brackets and column. And run it. No, column, not semi-column.
Sir. This is right, actually this is correct.
So this is just an example of. I'm sorry you.
It's not correct.
Well, that space, that gap you give, after age, there is no gap there.
Steven, it's not going to be wrong, bro.
Even that column, there is no space.
There's no space there as well. Right?
We did not put the correct input, what, what have we had in again? Play it first, run it. Okay. Okay, sorry, from the explanation, actually, this is actually like a wrong, just giving a sample.
No, no, no. You know, the input is not complete. Yes, it's not complete, hold on.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Shoma, you go beyond what is being taught in class. I'm seeing that you are trying to, you go beyond what is being taught in class. I'm trying to see that you wanted to break the function. And we have, we have not reached that part, okay, you can teach what we are, what we are currently on. What we, what I taught you from Monday to, uh, Friday, okay?
Alright, alright, no problem, Anitha, let's move on to variables. So, we actually, I've actually like explained identifiers. So, variables are containers for storing data, that's just the short form I could come up with. Why identifiers are just names given to. Yes. So, example is. Are you there?
Yes, I am. Yes, my screen.
Yeah, example is when you, when you're coding age equals to twenty-five.
Yes?
Yes, do you run it? So like.
I ran it.
Alright, so like, age equals to, age, age, the word age is the variable that is storing the value twenty-five. That is the simple way for variables, I don't know if you guys understand?
I understand.
Alright, moving on to rules for naming, in variables. Score. Sorry, you must start with a letter O and underscore.
Okay.
Example.
Example?
Yes, you can code in name equals to Alice.
You run.
Okay, and the second example is underscore age equals to thirty.
Iran, correctly.
These are like, this, it's just like displaying that this is a correct form, but if you start with a number, like, one var equals ten, like, one variable equals ten, it's going to show you an error. Because it's not part of the rules for naming variables.
It gave us an error already, two facts error.
Right, so the second rule is that, variable, cannot use special characters, like, your dollar sign, cent符号 sign,
Alright.
You want to try it, you can start with price equals to five hundred.
I'll try to, it was.
An example, price equals to five hundred, this is just an example of the correct.
Yeah, you ran to the screen.
Okay, so the second one is a price, price dollars, price with dollar sign equals to five hundred. Give an error, right?
Yes, invalid symbol.
So that's, that's just us displaying that special characters are not, cannot like, using special characters to name variables, cannot give you, eh, cannot run your task for you, instead it's going to give you an error. So, another thing is case sensitivity.
Okay.
Case sensitivity, if you, if you're keen, if you're keen, a word. Can I?
Yes.
Like, if you're keen, a word, or should I say, yes, a word differently. But, let's say, one of them starts with an uppercase and the other one starts with a lowercase. It's actually going to give you different outcomes. So they are just like different variables.
Yeah. You want to make a sample study for that?
For example, if you write age with capital letter, age that's seen with an uppercase, equals to twenty-five.
Yeah.
Under it, you still write age equals to thirty with a smaller, with a lowercase.
Alright.
So, the output, I now print age, go on the print bracket, uppercase age and lowercase. Comma. Sorry, sorry, it's comma, sorry.
Ash what?
Cancel that one. Cancel the, the, the last one, just like.
Okay, like, just like this is fine.
Yeah. Inside, no, no, don't run it yet, inside that bracket for age. Add a comma and also type in an A, another age with a smaller case, a lowercase, exactly, then you run it.
Yeah, it does this.
So it's going to interpret it like as different variables. You understand, right? So, yeah, like, the same, the same word, but because of the, um, cases, both the uppercase and the lowercase, it cannot be interpreted as the same variable. So, another rule for Python, naming Python variables, is that you cannot use Python keywords as variable names. Python key, key word. And will be that, yeah, names. Using an example, just like Coach Moses taught us the other day, when you code import equals to one to three.
Imports?
Equals one to three.
I should run it, try running them.
Going to show an error.
Yeah.
And because import is already a reserved keyword for Python, for Python. So, hope you guys are following.
I'm following.
Alright, I don't need further, can't see their reactions. Alright, so, let's move into comments in Python.
Comments in Python.
Yes. Alright, so. Yes?
Is it I meet you?
Can I go? Alright. Alright, so, comments actually used to explain code. And Python has single line comment, which is displayed in hash, using hash symbol. So the single, single line comments in, 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 single line comments in Python are displayed with the symbol of hash.
Alright.
So, let's, let's, um, let's try an example. Sorry, not really, okay, yes, name equals to Alice. I think this actually, that hash, that hash.
What, that hash, I should put hash before name.
Alright, before that, let's, let's, let's make a statement, see, eh, hash, hash, sorry, sorry about that. Okay, hash, this is a single line comment. I put this first, let's work this, we know. Okay, so, so, next, next tab, they will code in. Next tab, next tab. So, like, you see the command I gave you, hash, this is a single comment and name equals to Alice, it means a hash, the hash, the hash variable, so, it means I used the hash variable to store the name. Because this is a comment. Moving on to our second, um, type of comment, which is multi-line comments. Multi-line comments can be used, can be displayed using the symbols of, single quotation, right? Take this, single quotations.
I should start to code it.
Can I meet you?
No, not really.
No, not really, I'm going to explain it, so, those, those are, those are, those quotations, I think there should be three, those single line quotations, both of them, both the double and the single. Don't, sorry, both a single quotation or the double quotation, there should be three.
It should be, I don't guess.
It has, no, it actually like, eh, imputed on it. How do I describe it? Just like, eh, opening it and close it in three places, something like that. All of them, the opening quote should be three, the closing quote should be three. Exactly, to make it three. Exactly, so design with the single quotation. So, these symbols is what we use to explain multiple lines of code. So, moving on to statements in Python. Types of statements, which is also single line statements and multi-line statements.
Yes. Shoma.
Four of this, yes?
What did you say?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Let's see an example, nine statements.
Okay. What should I type?
So. Sum, like, S U M equals to five plus three, we are about to sum something up.
The capital letter or small letter?
Anyone is, is okay.
Okay.
They're under it. Print sum.
Should I run it, yes? Yeah, you run.
It was, it's right?
Yes.
Exactly, so, um, then let's give an example with multi-line statements. Multi-line statements use a string. Or should, how do I put it, um, um, just like slash, yes, the slash symbol.
What did you say?
The multi-line statement uses the slash symbol.
Okay. You better write it.
Slash. No, not this one, the one inside. Yes. So, example, less, in, total, it's five plus ten.
Total? What did you say?
C O T A L. Equals five, ten.
Five plus ten?
Yes, plus. Slash. Yes, under eight. Fifteen plus twenty.
Sixteen plus?
Fifteen plus twenty.
Okay.
And on, and under eight, print total.
Running.
Yes. So, this is just like a multi-line addition, if you calculate everything, five plus ten plus twenty and plus fifteen, you're still giving the same answer, like, it's a multi-line statement because it was actually run on different, different lines, it's not run on a straight line, but you still sum everything up and still give your results. So, let's move on to camel case versus snake case. Also include Pascal case.
What did you say?
I said, also include Pascal case, camel case versus snake case versus Pascal case. So, um, this case is actually, they are the.
I cannot hear you again, Shoma, did you shut off? Abis my network. So can anybody hear me? Shoma, I, I could not hear you for some time. I come again. Yes, stay there.
I think that, eh, this is, that's, eh, the camel case, snake case and Pascal case. They are the naming conventions that are used to improve readability. Just like, you code, wait, wait, code the language, all of them have different ways, you can actually display them. Are you look, can I, can I come again? Exactly, readability.
No, 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 I got it now.
So, I'll start with, camel case. For camel case, the first word starts with, with the all program, student's name, they'll be together, but, like I said, camel case, the first word starts with a, lowercase, and the, the, the.
It's not, first word is uppercase, or the word is lowercase.
For this, for, this for camel case. Um, I don't care that has both words, eh, that starts both words with, um, sorry, with uppercase. But for camel case, you start with the, the next word. This student I wrote, the S, yeah, an uppercase with lowercase.
Upper case, you leave me lowercase.
Yes, the first word should start with the lowercase.
Okay.
So, student's name equals to John. Is an example of a camel case.
Upper case or what? Wait, 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 come, Shoma, I, I see my screen. Right, everything, everything should be in lowercase. Shoma. Can anybody see here, Shoma, I'll be just my network.
No, I can't, I can't hear that too.
Okay. I don't know, just to confirm, camel case, is it not, is it not the first letter that should be in uppercase? I was saying lowercase for more, when she comes back.
Yeah, that, that's what she was saying, that's what she was saying.
She was saying lower letter, lowercase, that was she was, I heard that say lowercase. Shoma, are you back?
Yes, I'm back.
Sorry, like, you were. So I was asking you that, you're saying the first letter should be is lowercase. For students.
I'm saying, eh, the first word, the first word starts with a lowercase.
Mm-hmm.
Only the first. Yes.
The other one should be in uppercase or what?
Me saying, um, my name is Shoma, so this is just like, eh, four words, right? My name is Shoma, so, we are to write it together, I remember there are types of, eh, eh, there are actually different types of cases in programming. So, I will still get, get to that, while some of them uses underscore to create space. While some, there are no space in Python, actually, in, in, in programming, so, this one uses a camel case. So actually differentiate the words, if you are trying to read it, like I said, all these cases are naming conventions that used to improve readability. So if you want to read it as separate words, the first word, which is my, is going to start with a lowercase, that M, that's the first word for the first, the first letter for the first word, is going to start with the lowercase. You get, then the rest, from name, name is going to start with an uppercase, is, is going to start with an uppercase, Shoma is going to start with an uppercase. Do you understand? So that's what I was like saying, you should input like students. Yes, student's name. No, no, not, not like saying that the whole thing should be in capital letter, just the first word for, the first, um, sorry for misquoting the words, exactly, yes. So, student name equals to John. This is an example of a camel case, it's actually used in some programming languages, but not all. So, that's it. Um, moving on to snake case. So let's, moving on to snake case, now, snake. What did you say?
Yeah, I'm with you, so moving on to snake case, right?
Yes, snake case, so, snake case, in snake case, the words actually separated by underscores, and it's mostly preferred in Python.
Okay.
Exactly, is, exactly, but, I recommend, if I, we, everybody recommends, other programmers out there recommend snake case for Python. So there's, like, where you also type that student's name. You just use underscore to separate them, everything has to be in small letters, you don't have to start creating up, uppercase, exactly. uppercase, exactly. You can run it.
Yeah, you run it successfully.
Yeah, so for Pascal case, it's actually similar to camel case. But the difference is that the first word is also capitalized.
Like S?
Yes, if you still type that student's name. Sorry, hold on. Sorry, hold on. Ah, it's, it's actually used, it's actually used for class names. So you can type class student's name. With column. Delete, delete. Eh, delete everything. Can you hear me? Yes, eh type.
I can hear you, John.
Yes, class, student's name. Type it in, type it in Pascal, type, type it using Pascal case.
In capital letter or what?
Yes, the both words eh eh starts with capital letter but there is no space between them. Not everything is in capital letter. Remember what I said, the first words. Column. Add column. You can run it. Pascal case are actually used for class names only.
This is how to define our class.
Eh?
Is anybody in that? Is anybody in that, Chuma?
They removed that class. I'm not, I'm not actually, you're not actually meant to. Is this, okay, just delete the class. Just run it again, let's see.
Start with the column, remove the column too.
What's it?
Just put column, that's all. It was error.
Column, not equal.
It's giving us error as well. It's not complete. That column is not complete. It was error.
Under, I write pass first, let me see.
Pass. Under, cover the column.
Yes, under it. I don't know what's really wrong, Sha. Or maybe I'm the person that is.
Okay, okay, I see that.
Sorry, don't delete.
I see that you want to declare eh a class. For you to declare a class, you write class, you write class first and a column.
I write what?
Class, class and a column.
Okay, to be inside the, okay.
Column. Then tab. Tab. Then this eh, your eh pass, remove the pass.
Our pass should where?
Remove the pass.
Yes.
Okay.
Remove the pass under.
Okay.
So, and we have not gotten to that part yet too, but I want to tell you what you want to create, what you intend to create. I know you want to see our eh class work, right? Chuma?
Yes.
So.
Start.
Okay, um, um, okay. He said eh move the students up, the student's name up and remove the class and remove the column. And yes, remove the column. Okay, then at the end of the name, put the column, the bracket column.
Yeah.
Then you can pass in anything down. Okay, we can pass in, let's see eh eh def underscore def. Def, no, remove the pass, remove the pass, remove the pass. You write def, D E F. Remove that underscore. I said D E F, remove the underscore. Then we can write eh underscore, underscore int. Unders-
Underscore int. Let's face.
Not the that one, underscore, underscore. Make it two.
Integer.
Yes, make it two. We underscore, yes. Eh there, int. Int, not in. Remove the, we put I, okay, underscore two underscore.
Under underscore again.
Yes, two.
You're not reading from the class.
Brackets. Self, brackets, self. Name, comma name, comma age, comma gender. So this is the way to create eh class. I'm not going to run it for you guys, but I want to tell you this way. So the next, you are going to say self, under the, under it. You put column, put column there, say, put column. Then self dot name equal to name. Then self dot age equal to age. And self dot gender equal to gender. Okay? Okay, now run it, let's see. Run it, let's see. Correct your indentation, move everything upward. And press enter.
As you move what?
Move your def, the def starting from, okay, inject it where they were. I want you to inject it where they were.
Is there a way to do that here?
No.
Use, use your tab, um, eh your tabs key.
My tab is not working, that's why.
So you can do it like this. Go to the def, move it up and press enter, automatically it will start. Go like that. No, don't align on a single line, yeah?
Okay.
Move them one after the other.
Like this?
Yeah, enter. Okay, still the same way you do the rest.
Still giving error.
It will give you an error because the code is wrong, but this is the format, okay? So we can move to the next.
All right, let's move to the next. What's, what's the next, Chuma? To, to sum up eh the reasons for using all these cases. Camel case is actually neat for variable names. Why we use all these cases is because camel, camel case is neat for variable names. Then snake case, as long as underscore, exactly the Python standard. And it's actually make the code exactly. Pascal case that is used because it's neat for variable names. It didn't include neat. Because it's neat for very, the camel case is used because it's neat for variable.
Okay.
All right. Then snake case, please type snake case with an underscore so that everybody can know. Yes, underscore. And also for that camel case, yes, the second word should actually start with the, and yes, exactly. So it's actually, flip Python's standard. And it's, it actually makes the code easier to read. While Pascal case is used for declaring um, um, class names. Remember Pascal case has, has a uppercase for both words, exactly.
Used for declaring?
This tool. Sorry, it's just for declaring?
Chuma?
Class name.
Class name.
Class name.
I've done that.
Okay, so let's move on to our next phase, which is indentation in Python. Indentation in Python. Indentation. Indentation. Somebody would like to speak, okay. Somebody wants to speak, who is that?
Let's not, it's no more. Is anybody speaking? Iris Smart? James? I don't think anybody is.
No, no, I don't think so.
Okay. All right, so indentation in Python, all right. Chuma, you were saying indentation, what you saying?
Indentation is, the spaces used at the beginning of the line.
Of like what's line?
At the beginning of a line to define blocks of code. It's correct, at the beginning, yeah? Find.
Yeah, I'm thinking that.
So. Why is indentation important? It's actually important because it defines code structure that use the loops, functions and conditionals. It defines code structure. Defines code structure, use using words, loops, functions and conditionals. Second, readability. Improves. It improves. And also, lastly, it avoids indentation error. So we'll be given an example of both a correct indentation and, and, and the indentation that can actually give you an error. So code. This way correcting.
Okay.
If. By. If.
If what? If what?
Hold on.
If.
See your screen. If, is greater than three.
If I. Than what?
Eh, greater than three.
Okay.
Three.
Everything is.
Three.
Everything is dirty.
Column. Under it, print. Column, there's no column. Yeah. Print. Five. Indent. I can't really. You're gonna see my screen. My screen is currently on, can anybody else see my screen?
Yeah, I can see.
Yeah. Now. Can you hear me? Yes, since I did. I double clicked on, just like make this. And five is greater than three. Five is greater than three. Now write it simple, is greater. Yes. Than three. I run it. You see, see, it's actually, it's actually, this is actually a proper indentation. So let's, so on that same code, we display a wrong or incorrect indentation, which is when you remove that eh indent. I don't, no, no, don't put again, on that same code. Yes, add a print, back like, no, where you wrote print, exactly, delete the indent, exactly, then run it. It's going to give us an error. Even wrote it, indentation error. Expected that, that's because. Expected and it's a dead block. Exactly. Hold on, please, I need to explain it again, my sister didn't understand. The correct indentation what? I said I want to explain this, my sister didn't understand. So like, yes, I just want to run it of like, indentation, like I said, it actually defines the code structure using loops, functions and conditions and it improves readability. And also it avoids indentation error. An example of the errors you can come across. So first, we'll start with the correct indentation, which is if five is greater than three, then we now indent our print. It's just like, eh paragraph. From say, if I use, like in Google Docs, it's just like a paragraph you create or it can also for it, indenting, using indentations to create paragraphs. So this is just like, where you indent your print, you, you indent your statement, it's going to give you a correct, it's going to run your code eh in the proper way. But if you don't indent it, it's going to give you an error. Look at, study the difference. So can we move on?
We can move on, Chama.
Okay. Alright, so on to. Some uh Wednesday class. It's Monday, Wednesday class, we'll just do a quick recap, Google Colab. Is actually a powerful tool for Python and data analytics. So and also keywords are used, sorry, keywords are reserved words in Python. Variables, sorry, I'm rushing too much, variables store data but must follow the naming rules. Remember the rules we named earlier? And also indentation is crucial for writing clean Python code. Then we also use comments and statements to properly make the code understandable. And also naming conventions such as camel case, snake case and pastel case helps to improve our code readability. So we'll dive into the sessions we had on Friday. We have. Still started indentation full time in Python. So. Can I proceed?
Yes, you can proceed.
Yeah, so. So. So like, you know, we described um indentation earlier, so also, I also start by saying indentation in Python. Is the spaces or tabs. Spaces, okay, in your keyboard, you have the the space key, right? You also have the tab key, so it's just like the spaces at the beginning of the line. To define a block of code. A line is not just like a straight line, it's just like um a statement on 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 that, just like on the first line. Okay, to explain it in a layman's understanding, it's just like when you're writing your essay. Or you're writing a letter, for your first um statement, you start with the paragraph, right? Then after that, after your first stop, you still continue, but if you check well, you see that that first line actually has an indent. You can also create an indent using the space or your key on your keyboard. I don't know if you guys are following.
Yes, I'm following, Chama.
Yes. Like some some other programming languages that use a curly brackets, no curly bracket, right? Those brackets with um. I don't know how to put it. It's on either side. To mark blocks, like some other 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 um programming languages.
See what I'm showing you, woman, I see my screen, Chama. This is brackets. Can you see my screen?
That's the brackets, so they they use it, some other programming lan. Languages, uses to mark their blocks, so like I said earlier, indentation is important because it shows which line. Which, sorry, sorry, it is important because it defines code blocks. It actually shows which lines of code that belongs together, like inside an if statement or a loop. And also it marks a code readable, a proper indentation improves code structure and clarity. And also a proper indentation actually avoids error, if you use an incorrect indentation, it leads to an indentation error which stops the code from running. So we. Um, give an example, yeah, so. Um, let's let's also start, let's also create an if statement. See how indentation like.
I'm two years, what am I writing?
See how indentation works for that. So we'll start with indent, it was thirty.
Indent.
You run it.
What's it, if what?
No, let's start with, I said we are trying to create an if statement to see how indentation works, so we'll start with. Indent, if it's thirty, then you run it. Let's declare indent as thirty. Indent. Then you run it. Run it, run it.
I have, I don't need to ready.
If indent. Double equals thirty, column. Next tab, next tab, and under it. If indent. Double equals thirty. Under it, print, correct.
Print what?
Indentation for you. Correct. Use quotation for the correct, bubble quotation inside the, yes.
And she run it. Did I run it, Chama?
Yes, yes. So this is like a proper indentation, so but however, like it will kind of like. Misplace the indentation. By pushing it backwards. From back of print, remove your indentation from print. And run it again. Then to show you an error or no indentation, right?
Expected an indented block after if statement or when.
Exactly, so like. We actually got this error because Python actually expects indented blocks after the if statement. So the thing is, we should always ensure that our lines of code inside the block, like inside an if statement, actually in indented properly. Sorry, actually indented properly to avoid errors. So let's head over to variable assignments in Python.
Alright.
Like a storage box data, we can actually assign values or variables using.
Chama, we lost you, can you come again? Variable assignment in Python, yeah, one next.
Yes, I'm trying to explain.
Alright.
So like, a variable is like a storage box that holds data.
Okay.
So we can actually assign values to variables using the equal sign. Remember what I said earlier, when we assigned a. That is the value that we assigned to the variable age, so. Variables can store different types of data such as integer. That's integer in bracket, I N C.
Mm hmm.
The whole. Example, we have ten, hundred, minus five, something like that.
Mm hmm.
Minus five, mm hmm, and so on, while also. Oh, also, o- o- other types of data that um variables can store is also a float. Hmm, or you can put a float variable of float bar in brackets, float bar. So.
Mm hmm.
So float variables actually, this actually like variables that contains decimal numbers or number, or they for that decimal points. Such as twenty point five, three point fourteen, minus zero point nine nine, but name it. And lastly, variables can also. Hello?
I can hear you, variable can also what?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Chama, can you hear me? I'm not muted, I'm not muted, I can hear you, Chama. Chama, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you now. So, so you can use a string bars. That's.
We can also store what, yeah, well.
Those will be stored in strings, S T R I N G S, or brackets, S T R. And string variables are texts that are enclosed in quotes. Example. Example, an enclosed quote. Use the quote sign and. Inside it's right.
Mm hmm.
Yes, and another example is also using the single quotes, you can also um quote Python inside then.
Mm hmm.
So these are. Yeah, so these are examples of of um string variables, so we'll start assigning, we'll give an example by assigning different variable types. So let's write some code to see how these variables work. Start by. Hashtag assigning values to variables.
Alright, Chama, I'm with you, please.
Okay, according. Into um integer variable ten, so let's assign ten to an integer variable, int bar, it was ten.
Mm hmm. One next, please. Chama, are you? I don't know, I can't. You were half for a while, I don't think if you're seeing on the call, like I'm on the next line now.
A float bar, it was twenty point five. String bar. String bar, it was. A word.
What's in those?
Okay, um, okay, then can run it.
I can't see your screen now. What I think? Can anybody else see my screen? I'm only the block of code.
I can see your screen.
Are you having network issue?
It just run, can you see my screen now, Chama?
Okay, so next, what next? Under the tab.
I'm only hearing Chama's voice, yeah.
Next tab, next tab.
Yeah, I cannot hear you, that's lousy problem. Can you hear me?
A new code, a new code.
Alright, what am I writing?
Yes, hashtag, print the variables on separate lines. Ah, I'm in love that.
So Anita.
Okay, I think. So the reason why I. Why, the reason why I'm explaining all these hashtags, printing the variables, remember when we explained meant? And comments, right? So these are the symbols that we need, this is like in the command that I'm giving.
Yes, and that is why.
Okay, she's back.
The study section.
Yes. Anita, please, can share your screen?
I'm sharing my screen.
Alright.
What what are you doing in the next step?
Okay. So. So we'll be printing the variables on separate lines. Just type that, printing the variables on separate lines so that anybody that sees this can understand what we're doing here.
Hello, Anita.
Hello.
Hello, Anita.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you too, after this, after this expression, your notebook is loaded and shared to the group chat so that everybody can. Not now, not now, not now.
Okay, okay. So we are going to do what?
Hello?
So please, what did you say?
It's not you, I I'm talking to Anita, I said after the, as Anita should download this notebook so that we share it on the group chat. So that everybody will have access on it.
Okay, 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 she will make a copy now.
Okay, you guys will continue.
Then submit the link, then grant access to everybody. Okay, so Anita, let's continue, so under it, you print int bar. Int bar. Under it again, it's bar. And under it, print string bar. String bar, they can.
It's on the code.
Yes. Yes. I am. So you see, it actually printed everything, it actually printed our variables on different lines. The way we assigned it. You understand? So if we still assign every, okay, I will still get there, that's for multiple assignments. So um the thing is that. Integer integers don't have. The small numbers. The white floats have the small numbers. Their strings are always enclosed in single or double quotes. The print function actually displays the values that are stored in the variables. So just like how we um um we recorded all these stuffs. And then we ran, sorry, that's that we assigned the values to the variables for each variables. And then we asked. Sorry, and then we had to run everything and ask it to print the output and it actually printed it the way we asked it to do. Sorry, the way we asked it to. So we'll be moving on to multiple assignments in 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 Python. So I think that's okay. So for multiple assignments in Python, things that. Python actually allows us to assign multiple variables in single line. To make the code to look cleaner and more efficient. If I'm typing, Python allows us to assign multiple variables in single line, making the code cleaner and efficient.
What did you say?
Also, it's supposed to be a text or not a code, but anyone shall can see what.
Is this all?
Yes, so let's see, we we use you use an example to see how multiple Python works. So. We could, okay, instead of assigning variables one by one like how we did earlier. Like uh int bar, it was ten, and under it, float bar, it was twenty point five. Five and under it, string bar, it was Python or hello world, you can assign all of them in a single line. In a single line by typing int bar comma, we differentiate it with a comma. That's how we assign. Float bar. Comma, string bar. It was ten, comma.
Is Chuma can't see my screen?
Is it hello world or Python?
No wonder we use.
Was. No.
We is hello. World, see, it's a world.
Yes, hello. They can run it. Print, we print one of the variables. The symbol of prompt bar, string bar, it was twenty point five, ten, hello world. Or you just type it was to hello world, you you get, like, everything has to match in order of the values that are assigned to the variables. And you can also use your print to display any of the assigned value, just like you use uh we displayed string bar. We just need to play everything, we only we only displayed one of the variables which is string bar. That's why we printed it and and it gave us the output of hello world. So can we move on?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so now we will heading to understanding data types in Python. Right? So. You think in Python, data type, sorry, in Python. In Python. Hello Anita.
Chuma, I can hear you, what did you say?
Okay, in Python. Because data types define. In Python. I'm explaining.
Python, what did you say?
In Python. In Python comma. Data. Find the type of. Define what? Defines a type, defines the type of the value. Defines the type of a value.
Chuma, I don't know, your background is giving a kind of, I cannot get, I'm only hearing you, I'm in your background. Can you talk out loud or or do some messing in your background, I'm only hearing you.
Okay, let me, I don't know if it's because of my fan. I said, in Python, data types define type of value that a variable hold. Oh, who's top? Okay, so um actually, knowing the data types helps in handling and processing data correctly. So we'll start with them, the common data types in Python. Which you have the integer, the floats, the complex, the strings and the boolean. Start with, then everything come back.
I'm only hearing you well, I mean something, I mean your background, I cannot hear you well.
See your keyboard sound, I think it's echoing on my on my phone. I don't know my background, you're so quiet, or let me go, yes.
I mean like.
I'm also I'm also hearing a keyboard here, the keyboard.
I'm not typing now, I'm not typing, I can see your background, I don't know what's making the noise. So I'm like, let me off, it's covering your voice, I can't hear what's here, maybe you speak louder.
Hey, just give me a second. Alright. So what about now?
It's better now.
Hello.
I can hear you now.
Okay, let's proceed with the integer. So let's let's proceed the first data types in Python. Some type of them, which is the integer, the floats, the complex, the string and the boolean. So like, we've already treated integer before, like I said, integers are whole numbers. And I gave the example, it can be a negative number, a positive number. As long as the whole number, it doesn't have the small point. Then the floats, then the first data types are numbers with the small point. And then the complex, the complex numbers are numbers with real and imaginary parts. For example, five plus two J. So the J is actually like the imaginary part of the number. Just like two J, as they are together, J is the imaginary part of of number two. Because J is actually, it's just like in maths, when you write two J, it's like two um. Two J is just like two times, two times J, or don't know the value of J, so it's just like an imaginary number. Hello?
I can't, why are we teaching, I can hear you.
Then the string, like I said. String uses quotes, is a text that is enclosed in quote, I use both the double quote or the single quote. Special mark, therefore, boolean, boolean only has two two values, which is the truth, sorry, which is the true and false value. So. Um checking, we'll move on to how to check data type. So in Python, we actually use the type bracket, like enclosed brackets. We actually use the 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 type function, sorry. We actually use the type enclosed bracket function to check the data type in variable. Are you following me? Like T Y P, then the two brackets, just like how you type, print, I want to print out something, but you want to know its type. You want to say the type, you assign type and inside the brackets, you now input um the type of data you want to know its type. So we'll start with an example. We'll start by checking an integer data type, so you can code. You cannot see my screen. I'm seeing you boys hanging, like, I don't know. Open a code tab, then can type in. You can assign an integer value. Remember in explanation, I said that we use the type brackets, enclosed brackets, the type enclosed brackets function. You can you can you can explain it. T Y P then brackets, that's enclosed brackets. The data type of a variable, so once we first check the data type, what first check the integer data type? So it's how we assign an integer integer value. Are you following? Hello? Anita. Can you? Hear me?
I guess Anita is a bit challenging with this network.
Okay, she's back. Anita, shall we proceed?
What did you say? Like this.
Yes, I'm just like. I was explaining.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, I can see your screen. This is just like an explanation, I'm just like telling you, use hashtag to explain it. We use type enclosed bracket.
Can you see my screen?
I don't know, you're you're not really, I can't see your screen. Yes, I can hear you now.
Can you see my screen now?
Yes, I can.
Can you see?
This kind of. I need to list those.
No. Can I what?
Delete it, delete it, that's what I said, I was trying to like, no like, like I said. Use both text and code to explain. In Python, to explain to explain that. We create, sorry, we use um the function type bracket, type, it's in close brackets. Just like how you explained others, using hashtag, in Python, we use type bracket closed function. To check the data type of a variable. So let's code an example. Are you there? So. Input data equals fifty.
What am I doing next, Chuma, please?
Right, print.
Print what?
Type data. No printers is own. That's the answer. So inside a bracket for type, you write data.
Can you see, can you see my screen, I've found that class integer. Can everybody see my screen, please?
I said, print type data, remember that.
I've done that already.
Checking data type, we use the function type with enclosed bracket, so.
I've done it already, can anybody see my screen?
I'm never even seeing the movement of your.
Are you serious? Nobody, nobody can see my screen?
Okay, yes, yes, I'm seeing this, right. So now you brought out the class of. Yes, I can see it.
Okay, what next?
Um, please react with an. Emoji, if you can see it, that's all that's, okay.
What are we doing next?
So it. So he brought out the data type, and telling us that it's actually an integer. So the second example, let's check, let's check a float data type. So, so you can edit that code to fifty point five.
Let, let's put the new code log.
Alright. Also, print this.
Anita, your whiteboard marker is showing, please, can you unpin it?
What's? This is on my screen now, have you? Screen. How did it come up here, I don't know, I don't know how to use it.
Go to the pin, unpin it, or hide it, go to that place you are seeing whiteboard marker. Go to that place you are seeing whiteboard marker, where there is pin. Hello Anita? No, to that place where you are seeing other people in class. To that column, eh, no, the three tab. Okay, the three tab, the three, eh, dots, please click the three dots. And hide. Go to the place where they wrote whiteboard marker, the three dots, and, and hide it. Hello Anita? Hello Anita?